Okay, Mayor, we are live on Facebook and recording.
Okay. Okay, we'll call this regular session to order Wednesday, January 6th to 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. Please allow me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get started with visitor comments, we had our swearing in today. I would like to congratulate Counselor Berkeley and Counselor Chilton to the City Council. And we got a little video of all of us getting sworn in today by Judge Grove. And hopefully, we don't have any technical complications here. So, here we go.
Good afternoon. I'm Judge Jed Grove from Plunkett County Circuit Court. And it's my pleasure today and honor to be administering the oath of office to Rick Scholes, the Mayor of St. Helens, and then two other counselors, I understand, that follow. So, we're going to start with you, Mayor Scholes. So, I'm going to have you raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rick Scholes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The State of Oregon.
The State of Oregon.
And the City of St. Helens.
And the City of St. Helens.
And will honestly.
And will honestly.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Mayor.
Of Mayor.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
During my term.
During my term.
Of office.
Of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And you go ahead and sign. There's two copies there, right? Thank you, Judge. No, you bet. Thank you to all of you voted for me. One copy's mine.
Uh-oh.
Want to do it?
Okay. All right. Good job, Matt. Move the air alone.
Position number two, Patrick Burkle. It's Berkeley. Berkeley.
Berkeley.
It is. As you raise your right hand, swear after me. I state your name. I, Patrick Berkeley. Do solemnly affirm, just solemnly affirm, that I will support, that I will support the Constitution, the Constitution and laws and laws of the United States, of the United States, the State of Oregon. Again, the State of Oregon and the City of St. Helens. And the City of St. Helens. And will honestly and will honestly and faithfully and faithfully perform the duties, perform the duties of City Councilmember of City.
At least I got volume.
Councilmember, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability and understanding and understanding during my term of office, during my term of office. Congratulations. Let me go ahead and sign. And next we'll have the move out. Position number four, Jessica Chilton. Please raise your right hand and swear after me. I state your name.
Hi, Jessica.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Oregon.
The State of Oregon.
And the City of St. Helens.
The City of St. Helens.
And will honestly.
And will honestly.
And faithfully.
Faithfully.
Perform the duty. Duties.
Perform the duties.
Of City Councilmember.
Of City Councilmember.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
During my term of office.
During my term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, thank you.
It was a little laggy, but it wasn't too bad, so.
It was a very huge file size, so.
Yes. All right. And again, congratulations, Counsel Berkeley, Counsel Chilton. Congratulations. Look forward to doing a lot of wonderful things for you guys, so.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to open it up for visitor comments. If you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand if you have a comment to make to the City Council. I'm looking here and I'm not seeing anybody. We'll give it just another second here. Give me a chance.
Rick, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
This is Darrell. I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay, hey Darrell, what you'll be able to do is if you got it on your computer, you'll see the participant up top, if you touch the Zoom link or the screen up top, it'll pop up. They participate and then you'll, when you hit that, you'll see like a bunch of options down below. It should say, raise your hand on there.
Um, so it says Zoom meeting, recording.
Mayor, if he's already talking, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, yeah, Darrell, if you're wanting to comment, that'll be towards, a little bit towards the end of this.
Okay, I didn't know if this was a time or not.
Yeah, I will let you, I will remember that you're here and I think Rich is probably on a phone here. So, we'll, we'll definitely, okay?
We just didn't know when the time was, so.
Yep, yep. Okay, not seeing any visitor comments. So, we're going to deliberate on the exemption of competitive bid requirements for Campbell Park Sports Court Installation Project. So, it was a pretty, pretty cut and dry. We put out a number of times, did not get no contractors to bid on it and explained to the City Council that we could go out now and get three bids and pick the winner. Is what I took from that public hearing. So, would somebody like to entertain a motion?
I'll move that we follow your advice and go out for bids.
Well, okay, so what would that motion look like? Go out for competitive big bids required.
Oh, for playground, is it playground equipment or?
It's the sports court. Go ahead, Patrick.
Well, I was just going to suggest if, I would second Steve if, 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 like, I guess I, I would move to, to exempt us from competitive, competitive bid requirements for Campbell Park Port Sports Court Installation Project.
Good, so I got a motion by Counsel Topaz and a second. No, I got it the other way around. I got you did the motion and Patrick said he would second it, so. All in, we're going to do roll call. Counsel President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
Counselor Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Berkeley.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, resolution number 1909, a resolution.
Can I bring up something on the resolution? I looked at the ORS 294.414. And under section four, it said, appointed members of the Budget Committee may not be in officers, agents, or employees of municipal corporation. Does that throw a monkey wrench into the works of trying to appoint Matt Brown?
Well, let me get this on the table and we'll make a motion and we'll have discussion, okay? Because that's the process. So, resolution number 1909, a resolution adopting the Budget Officer for fiscal year 2021, '22.
I move we adopt resolution number 1909 as read.
Okay. Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is seconded, so now we'll open it up for question.
Uh, no. Mayor, if I could add some context to what I believe Counselor Topaz is raising a question about is that there's a difference between the Budget Committee and the Budget Officer. The Budget Committee has specific RS requirements of the form and function of the Budget Committee. One of those is assigning the officer. And, you know, years past, I've been the Budget Officer at other organizations. At this organization, Matt is Finance Director, has been the Finance Director, the past Finance Director, has been that Budget Officer that we assign every year for the budget and, yeah, our annual budget. So, I think that might maybe the point of confusion.
Well, the question is, does he have a vote or is he just preparing this?
Just, no, yeah.
Has no vote.
Right.
Okay, that's, as I say, I want to differentiate that he can facilitate but can't vote.
That's correct.
That does still staff him.
Yes, okay, so, all right, we, we cleared that up, all right.
Okay.
I have, I have a motion that has been seconded to approve resolution 1909. Counsel President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
Counselor Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Berkeley.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Award bid contract, SCADA upgrade project at water filtration facility to advance electrical technologies for $146,940.
I move we award bid contract to SCABA upgrade project at the water filtration facility to advance electrical technologies for $146,940.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to award big contract to SCADA for $146,940. Counsel President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
Counselor Chilton.
Aye.
Counsel Berkeley.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. All right, approve and authorize for signature for dedication deed for portions of Lot Ellensburg subdivision in North Vernonia Road for public use. Five, agreement with Lane Council of Government and Compensation Survey for non-representative employees. Six, agreement with Kittleson and Associates, Inc. For assistance with Oregon Community Pass OCP grant application and implementation.
I move we approve and authorize for signature item number four, five, and six as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been, go ahead, discussion.
And so, right, so after the motion seconded, then it's time for comment or discussion.
Yeah, discussion, yes, yep. If you, if you ever have any, if you have any comments, say, Mayor, just interrupt me because sometimes he's so fast, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And I just want to say, I, I guess the first time I've looked at this and seen it and I just really hope that recognize the generosity of the property owners, I think, for, you know, doing this to provide, this is part of this, that whole sidewalk project. So, just really appreciate, I'm not sure how they pronounce their names, the Ives.
Yes.
The Ives, yeah, just want to acknowledge and appreciate the generosity, the Ives for, for doing this.
I do believe it's Ken and Karen, I do believe, yes, thank you. Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to approve and authorize for signatures, items four, five, and six, Counsel President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
Counselor Chilton.
Aye.
Counsel Berkeley.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, consent agenda for acceptance, seven, Parks and Trails Commission minutes dated October 12th, 2020. And eight, Library Board minutes dated November 9th, 2020.
I move we accept it, consent agenda, item number seven and eight as read.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda seven and eight as read. Counsel President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
Counselor Chilton.
Aye.
And Counselor Berkeley.
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda for approval, council work session, executive session, public hearing, and regular session minutes stated December 16th, 2020.
I move we approve consent agenda number nine, council work session, executive session, public hearing, and regular session minutes dated December 16th, 2020.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda nine. Counsel President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
Counselor Chilton.
Aye.
And Counsel Berkeley.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, we have some work session items that we threw up and I, Matt, we, can you?
Yeah, first thing is 970 Oregon Street, that's the discussion with Jacob.
Oh, yes. Okay, yes, so now would be the time that we're going to deliberate and I have the applicants here that were part of that, you know, talks. And so, Darrell, we're getting ready to talk about this. If you would like to chime in because I offered you, Rich was not able to.
I'm here.
Hey.
There he is.
Hey.
Rich.
Technology. Um, yeah, this is Rich Bailey, just want to appreciate your time and consideration in this matter. I've got a few things I'd like to bring forward to you and then something to bring to your attention why this probably shouldn't even been a condition of approval. Number one, we got mentioned quite a few times about where the bus facility is, how they donated their land to make that road wider over there. Well, I think we should all think back, that used to be freezing lumber, very, fairly large piece of property. When the county took over that piece of property, took it off the tax rolls, wasn't a big deal to them. It's a little bit of parking for a couple buses and it's a huge piece of property. For us, it's 5% of our property is what you're wanting, not just a little bit, 5%. That's on street value for highway industrial property is quite valuable. You're probably in the $50,000 range for that little strip of dirt right there, let alone the cost of moving the fence in hard rock. This isn't dirt, this is St. Helens over there. And the, we're going to eliminate a lot of our storages because we won't be able to get around. I just, at that part, I just don't think it's fair at that part to take this huge, or not just a little bit, we're up about $100,000 in our, out of our pocket for something down the road that might or might not happen. You have a couple conditions in your, in your charter about, in your, under, I wish I remembered what the letter of it was. But it mentions, when you're doing your zones and highway industrial, you should be, you shouldn't be adding more traffic to highway industrial, like residential traffic through a highway industrial property. It's commercial, it's used for big equipment coming in and out. It's not made for residential. I don't know why the, the trailer park got put in there, but that's, that's it, it's there. But they, you're talking about down the road, who knows when, have been proving this road. You'd have to remove the Humane Society because it's right in the way. Go into that park trailer park somehow, go down to Madrona, which you can't get across because it's got a wetland down there that we all know you can't do anything with that. Because I've got plenty of experience of that anymore. So, there's just a couple of conditions, you just kind of, oh, then you're going to have traffic to Oregon Street where you have a poor intersection already because you got Deer Island Road, Oregon Street, Ray Road Track, Highway 30 stoplight. And you, and you're saying down the road, you're going to put more traffic on that? It, it doesn't make sense. So, I just don't see where the benefit of taking that valuable piece of property away from us, taking it off the tax rolls, eliminating our storages on one side. It's not even feasible for us to even put the other building at this point. It, we're losing too, too much, you know? So, we'll just buy a building and have it sit there and do nothing with it. So, I just think, I don't think it should have been a condition when you can't make Oregon Street into a major arterial, arterial road. So, I don't know why it's in there for. And that's about my two cents worth. I'm sorry to take the time, but I couldn't get into it.
No, you, yeah, you tried, so that's why we allowed you to come tonight.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate, appreciate you, Darrell. Do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Or you covered it, you, you did a pretty good job earlier, too.
Yeah, no, I think he's covered it. Like I say, it's, it's just creating a burden on us when, when to, to eliminate Crestwood subdivision. You'd have to displace 100, 100 more homes and then redesign that subdivision. I mean, that's probably not going to happen in our lifetime. And I've lived here 60 years and never seen the city move that fast. So, so, so that's a real, I mean, it's, it's, it's great to plan for that, but it's more likely that our piece of property will be sold and redone for something else in the time that you're going to have that happen. And at that point.
And you, that the property down by Madrone, there's not much buildable property left. It's, it's either wetland or steep or rocky, no sewer, things like that. I mean, it's a very small piece of property you can build on. It's a huge wetland range to Walton Lake or Dalton Lake, well.
Okay, all right, all right, so. Sit off to the side and we will, let us deliberate here, okay? And we'll, if we have any questions, we'll ask them of you, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Counsel, and I want to remind you that we also have Jacob Gretchen with us as well. If you have any questions and before we start kind of deliberating on this, Jacob, the recap of what the ask was, please.
Um, so what this is, is a vote to preemptively reject the right of way dedication. And if you recall earlier, I had three findings written and I can read those again.
I just wanted to recap, I think.
Which, which would be your basis.
Yeah. Okay.
Jacob, basically, you're saying if we abandon our worry, we just leave it as is, right?
Yes, if I know the council is not going to accept the dedication, then that condition is moot. If the council votes that way, because, you know, this isn't a land use hearing and so a lot of things have been thrown out there which may or may not be.
Yeah.
Accurate. And that's why I want to make sure the findings, as mentioned earlier, is the basis for your decision.
If we chose not to allow them, right?
If, if you, if you choose to reject the right of way dedication.
Yeah, but if we accept the right of way dedication, then it's, would stay the same, where that defense would stay the same.
Then, uh, the appeal stands. So, because they're, they're challenging that condition. So, if I know the council is going to be against the dedication, there's no point in pursuing the appeal with the planning commission.
Okay, and just to be clear.
Yeah.
And it's because it's getting confusing.
It is.
The way you're flipped, the way things are flip-flopped. Does Mr. Kersley and Mr. Bailey, are they, are they speaking in favor of the dedication or in, or in favor of not having the right of way? So, let's be clear.
They, they support your rejection of the right of way dedication.
Thank you.
So, a vote for yay or nay would mean what, just to clarify?
Well, it depends on the motion.
I just want to be clear.
Exactly. I'll make a motion if you want me to.
Well, can, here, let me just ask one, I, I, I'm kind of, I think, Jessica, this being our first.
Yeah.
Go around on some of this.
This has nothing to do with the first, I'm going to tell you, Patrick, I'm even confused right now.
Okay.
I don't know how I feel about the situation, which is that, I believe we should.
We, we can have a discussion.
In that way.
We can have a question and a discussion after a motion, okay?
Okay, okay, well, let's, let's do.
Okay, I move, I move that we deny the right of way dedication by 1970 Oregon Street.
I second that.
Discussion. Yeah, a motion's been made and seconded to deny the right of way in 1970 Oregon Street. Discussion, go ahead.
Okay, so basically what I'm getting now is that what we're rejecting would allow the, the owners to, to build as they propose. So, by, by voting to, to reject the, the right of way, that where they'll be able to build. So, if we, because that's the 40 foot is kind of the standard. But if we say we, we want to have the 40 foot, we accept it, then, then that was, would be imposing these burdens on them that, that could impact their ability to build and the value of the property.
That's what I gathered, too.
Okay, so.
Jacob, is that correct?
Not quite, it, it can be developed either way. They're just challenging the condition of the dedication. So, and if you reject it, then basically is, it's whether or not the appeal over the item goes to the planning commission. Okay. So, if, if you agree with Rich and Darrell, then your motion would be to, well, the motion's been made.
Yes. So, what would be the direct result of our motion?
Then the appeal would be moot. If passed, then the appeal would be moot and that would be the end of it. And they, they would already moved on. I already signed off on the building permit. It was a requirement at the end of the project, not at the beginning, so it will not hold up the permit. But it would, it would, it would no longer be an issue that they have to worry about.
So, okay, simple question, okay? On that motion that I just proposed, will Mr. Kersley and Mr. Bailey go away from this hearing smiling?
Yeah.
They would. They would, and then if you adopt the findings that I mentioned earlier today and that I will read, then I will go away satisfied.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Got you.
Okay, so, good. So, so this afternoon, I, I think I had expressed reluctance because I, I, you know, kind of like believed in the process going through the planning commission, et cetera, but I see the next planning commission meeting is coming up, there's uh, that's not on the agenda. I think that uh, both the, the landlords here, uh, uh, the folks uh, developing this have done a lot of good faith work and this and that, and talked about things, so I, I, in this, in a case like this, I have no qualms about going ahead to, to vote in favor of the rejection so that the appeal would be dropped, and they can move forward.
I think we have totally confused anybody who is watching us right now, I'm gonna tell you that right now.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna call this one to or, or to a vote, Council President Morton.
Aye.
Okay, Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
Counselor Chilton.
Aye.
Counsel Berkeley.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Okay, now let me read these findings that I'm asking for as a vote in support.
Yep.
So, uh, there's three, the first one, and these are a little wordy, so I apologize, so the first finding. Um, the multitude of residential dwellings that use this leg of Oregon Street, though significant in quantity as it relates to the city's street standards are all within a manufactured home park. The park's private street system is similar to this leg of Oregon Street lacking defined, notarized, uh, excuse me, non-motorized passageway improvements such as sidewalks, so basically, they're the same. So that's one, two. The adjacent railroad right of way provides some passive unimproved but accessible relief for the existing forty foot wide public right of way width of Oregon Street, and there has been no indication from the railroad operator or owner of, of, of obstructing the use of the railroad right of way adjacent to the Oregon, adjacent to Oregon Street. So basically, that railroad right of way helps with the reduced forty foot right of way. And then third, and the most important, the subject property has redevelopment potential in the future when right of way dedication requirements can be considered again. So, way our ability to look at this in the future.
Yep, that's what we want, and we approved it, and it sounds good, Jacob, good job.
Yes.
Uh, do you want, do you want us to vote on that approval?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because it wasn't a part of the original motion.
Yeah, so, okay, uh, um, would somebody, I, I can make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations Jacob just read, one, two, and three.
I second.
Discussion? None, okay, Council President Morton.
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
Counselor Chilton.
Aye.
Uh, Counsel Berkeley.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, uh, our next action item. Matt?
Council President.
Oh, yes, uh, so, uh, every first of the year, or every, is it every first of the year by our ordinance, or is it?
Odd year, yeah.
Every odd year, we uh, nominate a council president, um, which is um, uh, the council president's job is to uh, basically lead, lead council and be there when I'm not there, he is, you know, or she is, um, that person, so. Um. I, I would like to nominate Doug just because he's already been there, I don't know, and it's a discussion amongst the council, but um, I just feel that he is um, knows the nod, has a deeper knowledge of than any of us, and um, is that right now, and I don't know, I just throwing that out there, I would like to nominate Doug.
I, I would, I would second that nomination, uh, I would have nominated him myself, I think, uh, because especially with uh, Counselor Locke uh, no longer on, uh, you know, that whole idea of having institutional memory and experience um, is important, uh, especially in a, you know, leadership uh, position on the council, so I, I would second that nomination for.
Okay, and it says do, it says do a paper by paper ballot, but we're in a technical, we're in a pandemic, so I'm just gonna call a roll call. Um, usually we do a paper ballot, just in case there was hard feelings, but um.
Doesn't that, Rick, doesn't that get into the problem of secrecy? I mean, you, typically, we could just put a paper ballot in now with nobody knowing what we wrote. Um, it, it's a question. Valid vote if it's not.
We might want, yeah, we might want to change that, we might just want to change that and give it a roll call, uh, I, I think we didn't do a paper ballot, I think we just, last time, we just kind of said we knew we needed to, and maybe we read them out, but you're, I agree.
We had a paper ballot the first year that I was on.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so.
But uh, but we can go ahead and I think, uh, do this.
Eric, if I could offer maybe a compromise, maybe if, go around on your roll call and just have people say the name. And that, that will get reflected in the minutes, as, as a written.
As a paper, written paper, yes.
Doesn't have to say paper and, and the charter, so just, it says by written ballot, and assumably, presumably it's written. Of something, something could be typed, I suppose.
Okay.
You could type it in the chat to me, or, and if you type it in the chat, it goes only to me.
I like Patrick wrote it, wrote it on a paper and showed it.
I, I don't.
I will do that too, I could do that too, I mean, but no, we'll just go ahead and say it, um, I'm gonna start with you, uh, Patrick, cuz you are and, and just have you, Counselor uh, Berkeley.
Yeah, I, I would uh, cast my vote for Counselor Morton as council president.
Okay. Counselor Chilton?
Um, I would pass my vote also for um, Counselor Martin.
Okay, Counselor Topaz.
I'll vote for me.
Okay, and uh, Council President. Um, uh, well, I guess I'll be the deciding one, I'll just go ahead and do, so you don't have to make it sound like you voted for yourself to win, Doug, I will, um, a- and Doug, your vote is?
My vote?
Yeah.
Oh, uh.
Already won, you already.
I would be, I would be, I would be honored to serve, and I have been honored to serve, and uh, I, I appreciate the uh, I, I appreciate the confidence in our, in our two new uh, uh, elected uh, councilmen and our council people, council person, some. But I appreciate the confidence, and I, I just want you to know, one thing is, is that what I really stand for is uh, teaming, and that means teaming with our, uh, with our council staff and our crews. Uh, and our city crews and our city staff and fellow council members, and uh, teaming with outside agencies like the port and uh, other municipalities. Uh, it, I think that that's extremely important. It's also important to uh, to involve uh, oneself and community outreach. And again, as the mayor stated, prepare yourself to be mayor at any time, it's like a backup quarterback. Quarterback gets, goes out uh, uh, on, in, in the middle of a Super Bowl on third down, he's gone. Uh, hey, you've got to fill the shoes, so it's good to be aware and up on everything that's going on. And uh, in the past, the mayor and I have teamed uh, to be uh, partners in uh, public works and parks and in uh, uh, city administration. So, to me, it's all about teaming, it's all about collaboration, and it's all about we, uh, instead of me. So that's, that's who I am.
That's kind of rolled.
He gonna vote for himself, though?
Yeah, he did, he said he'd be honored, so yes, yes, he said.
I was very honored, thank you.
Okay, so that kind of rolls into my council appointments, and um, I would like to uh, to appoint myself in um, Council President Morton over administration and public works again. Um, that seems to work very well. Um, I would like to uh, uh, point, Counselor Chilton, I would like to appoint you to uh, the liaison to the police station.
Perfect.
Okay, and Patrick Berkeley, I'd like to appoint you to the planning commission.
Thank you. No, I.
And uh. And, and Counselor Topaz, uh, you're doing a good job over there at the library, and it, you know, that, it's a very important position that we bring back our reports to when we need to, to the council, and uh, the, a big part of this job is uh, the way our, our um, city administrator job works is the department head, yourself, and the city administrator, if you have issues, and you all three agree, it's pretty unanimous that uh, you guys are making decisions, if it's a two to three and there's some little discrepancy, you probably will bring that to the council and get some advice. But you are um, a huge voice in your department, so don't take it lightly, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And, and it'll be very helpful, and uh, if you have any questions, um, to, to get you up to the knowledge you need to know, Jacob, Chief Greenways is great, so, alright?
Mm-hmm. So, uh. Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
I have a question about, okay, you appointed two departments, and uh, there's a couple of commissions that uh, you left off. The uh, Library Commission, the uh, or Committee, I'm sorry, and the uh, Parks Commission, Parks and Trails. Uh, are those staying status quo then?
Yeah, those are staying status quo, yeah, unless somebody would like to uh, you know, wants the arts, uh, it uh.
Or Arts and Culture, right.
Yeah, Arts and Cultural could use some, uh, it's kind of, I don't know what's going on there, it seems like.
They're in hiatus right now.
Okay.
Rachel was putting together a training course for them, so they understand what their actual operation is.
Okay.
And, so why do I keep, is, and Counselor Topaz, are you the current liaison for the Arts?
He is, yes.
Yeah, right.
Is it something you might be interested in, Patrick?
Not necessarily, planning uh, is a big, big chop, perhaps in the, the future, but I, I've uh.
Yes.
Yeah, planning, I need to come, ramp up, get up to speed.
Yes, there's a lot to learn in planning, a lot.
Is Counselor Topaz still interested in pursuing that?
Yeah, it sounds like it, I mean.
Right, in the library?
Uh, yeah, in pursuing ours in Cultural Commission.
Yeah.
Point, okay.
It's our same group.
Okay.
On that note, I would like to eventually maybe sit on the parks and uh, Rick, and learn about that eventually.
You are absolutely, it, it, and I want to make that clear to each and every counselor, you are not crossing any line when you go, you, when you're trying to find out this information about the stuff, city, you are not crossing any line, feel free to utilize the staff, okay?
Okay.
That's what they're there for.
Jessica, you are, in any of our Parks Commission's meetings, you are invited to attend, and uh, uh, just, just attend, see what's going on, and uh, I think that'd be very important, you can also testify. Uh, Jenny Carlson did that uh, several times with our Parks Commission, and I appreciated it very much. And uh, basically, it's a, it's a good thing if we have uh, uh, two uh, council people uh, at those meetings.
Uh, for right now, I don't want you guys getting burned out, because we're, I'm gonna, we're gonna have you, having quite a few retreats with this to council, because we gotta get up to speed on a lot of different things, we are moving forward as a city.
Mm-hmm.
So I just wanna, and, and any questions that you have, I mean, we, you know, if we don't have the answer, we'll get the answer, I'll tell you that.
That's, you know, that's one thing that I want to clarify and in, in our uh, retreat. We can talk about this at the retreat, but ever since I've been on the council, the uh, commissions, whoever on the council was assigned as a commission would oversee that commission. And they were not a liaison to that commission, because how can you be a liaison to uh, a commission uh, that, that you are responsible for? In, in so many ways, it's, 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 it's a tough place to be. Uh, to, uh, and, and, and as you can see, we had uh, bicycle and pedestrians vaporize because it just, it just fell apart. And Arts and Cultural is, is kind of, has fallen apart. And so, proven leadership comes through overseeing a committee to make it happen. And to oversee it, it doesn't mean that you have to run it like an iron fist or, or any kind of thing like that. It's, it's that you become responsible for what's going on with that, uh, with that commission. Because we have been a commission form of government, and ever since I was elected, I saw myself as that Parks Commissioner to oversee that commission. And uh, and maybe at times, some people might have thought I ran it like with an iron fist or whatever, but I, I, I didn't, I mean, we recruited, what I did do is recruit individuals to sit on that, uh, on that commission, and it has become one of our more viable uh, workable commissions that, that since I've, since I've been here, I'm so proud of those people doing that, so anyway, that's, that's my two cents worth, and uh, uh, we need to talk about that at our retreat to get a real definition of how we deal with our commissions. Okay, are we a liaison, or are we, or do we oversee it, okay, thanks.
Alright, thank you, Doug. Um, Matt, do we have any other action items, don't recall?
No, I don't.
Got them all. Okay, I just want to report, uh, again, uh, welcome to Counselor Chilton and Counsel Berkeley. Um, yeah, uh, we've got a lot going on as a city, and uh, you know, what I know is uh, twenty twenty-one is starting out uh, very fast, a lot of moving parts to it, and uh, um, I don't know that it's gonna get, it might get worse before it gets better, as far as what's going on, but I know that uh, what I know, do know is that uh, um, I'm here to represent each and every citizen of the city of St. Helens, and I haven't forgot why I signed up to do this. I'm here to make a difference, listen to you, if we're not listening to you, I will listen to you in order to bring it to the council, or we will listen to you, I know that. Um, but uh, yeah, I just haven't forgotten, and it feels good to, to actually have another uh, term underneath my belt and uh, two more years, and uh, a lot of big changes are gonna happen for the citizens, and uh, uh, it's gonna be good, uh, getting sworn in, and Patrick was looking out at the river, saying, yeah, and all this is gonna change to his life, it was a good feeling just to, to, um, yeah, that's where we're at, we're um, getting qualifications for the boardwalk and the street improvements for downtown, and we're also moving forward with the industrial property, so. Huge, huge impact for our community, huge. That's what I got to report, Happy New Year. Um, Council President Morton.
Thank you, and congratulations again to our two new council members, Patrick and Jessica, it's, it's, it's good to have you aboard. And I can only remember back twelve years uh, from now, uh, uh, ago. So not from now, I'm sorry, uh, ago, when I was sitting in your shoes and thinking that uh, on all my, on all my literature that I campaigned for was to open up the waterfront. Open it up, open up the waterfront, and I was appalled that we only had like four feet of space to get down to the dockage uh, of, of what, to get to our waterfront. And that was it, and since then, uh, we've had Great Cliff Waterfront Park uh, and expansion with that. Uh, we've had uh, the uh, purchase of the Boise veneer property and the Boise property, my heavens, we've got over a mile of waterfront now. You don't, I can't tell you how elated I feel that we as a council put all that together and, and made it happen. Uh, I, I just feel amazingly uh, uh, good that things are moving forward that way. Uh, the second part of my campaign way back then was safety. And today was another revelation when we looked at the police that the, that the uh, police building that we have, and all the enthusiasm that we have from our. that the, that the, uh, police building that we have and all the enthusiasm that we have from our public to make, uh, our community safe, and that is so much needed in, in our community. Uh, uh, that should happen, uh, to, one, attract people and families to our city. Uh, they come, if they come in on, uh, Old Portland Road, and if that's going to be a, a main artillery to get to our downtown area, uh, and, and, uh, Old Town as well, or Riverfront District, uh, that we go by the police station, it's apparent that we are, put safety as a priority in our community. We, that, that, that last, that police station, I don't know, uh, I, I remember being over there with Chief Salvi, and he was just appalled that how he was going to keep his evidence room open. He was appalled that they have a, a female officer and they don't have a dressing room for her. They have, I, it was just, it was appalling to me. So finally, we get something, uh, moving, and again, I feel elated. I feel so good about being a part of this council, and, uh, again, uh, greeting our two new council people and thanking our, our two council, uh, individuals, uh, uh, who left us. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Counsel Topaz.
Well, a year ago, at this meeting, I brought up that we needed an RFP for a tourism director. And I'm gonna say again, I'd like to do that. It was put off to July, then put off to September, then it was just disappeared. So I'd like to reinstitute that we, uh, advertised for a tourism director. And to make that job a little better, I'm gonna bring up the fact that I think we need an outside order of the tourism. Other than that, we've got a lot to do. A lot, I really think we're going to have to come down hard on a twenty-year plan because all of a sudden, we've got seven or eight major projects. And we ought to somehow be able to clip them together rather than working independently, which is where we've been for so long, because most of our projects have been small enough not to worry about who is next to you. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Uh, Counsel Chilton.
Well, I don't have anything to report on since this is my first meeting, but I am really excited and, um, nervous all at the same time. I take this job very seriously, and I am, um, pleased that St. Helens residents believe in me, and I hope that I can, um, come in and breathe some fresh air and really just, uh, bring some livelihood to the council and continue on your guys' journey that you've already started for the city. And, um, I think that the residents are really excited about that, and I am excited about my new journey as the liaison for the police. Um, it, that's a huge passion of mine, so I, I am excited to, um, support them in the new police station and just making sure that their needs continue to be met. Um, yeah, I'm excited about the transition. Um, I've got a couple of kiddos at home and a husband who are also transitioning with me, so we're all adjusting, but, um, making some headway. So thank you all for welcoming, welcoming me so much, and I look forward to, um, working together.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Counsel Berkeley.
Uh, again, thank you, and, uh, again, really nothing to report, but I would like to take the opportunity to, uh, yeah, first of all, thank, uh, the citizens of St. Helens who, uh, put their confidence in me with their vote to this, uh, position, and I, uh, really, uh, believe, I, I think I mentioned this to Mayor Shaw and Judge Grove too, that, um, uh, I, I won't take umbrage at being called a politician, as I understand it. The, the root comes from a Greek word, polis, which refers to the people or the community. And a politician is somebody who, uh, works for the good of the community, so, um, if I'm called a politician, I'll, I'll claim it because I, I really, uh, am here, uh, to serve uh, the residents, to help St. Helens, uh, become a, uh, a, a place of, uh, safety and, uh, and health for us. My wife and I moved here, uh, twenty-nine years ago with a three-year-old and a three-week-old child. We were looking for a place where we could raise our children without having to, uh, move, and we hope that St. Helens, uh, like to contribute uh, that St. Helens will continue to be that kind of place. Secondly, I just want to give my great thanks and appreciation to, uh, the staff, uh, those who have helped me with this transition, uh, for, for Kathy and, uh, Rachel and, uh, John for, for meeting with me. I've been trying to get around to meet various, uh, staff members, and I think if we were not in the pandemic by now, I'm sure I would have, uh, shaken hands with everyone. But I would just like to say to all, uh, the city employees, uh, my great respect, uh, for you and, um, my confidence that what you are doing is for the good of the city, and I hope that, uh, my approach is to ask questions, uh, as a teacher, as an educator, asking questions, and I just want to, ensure staff that I'm asked, if I'm asking questions, it's, uh, because I believe I need to be the best informed I am, and I'm not necessarily calling into question what has been, uh, just done or decided, but trying to seek understanding. And I will always, and also, I promise to come prepared to meetings uh, so that if there are particular questions that I might have about an agenda item, I, I will always do my best to try to seek that information prior to the meeting. And, or if I do bring it at, at a meeting, I will understand that it may, may take time, uh, to get that, that information. To, like, fellow, uh, well, fellow at this kind of exclusion, anyway, to, like, council members, uh, to, I'd like to express my appreciation to, to Mayor Schultz, Counselors, uh, Topaz and Morton for, uh, welcoming me here. I'm excited to, uh, be a newbie along with, with Counsel Chilton and excited that, um, uh, she's got, uh, a lot of energy. Um, I do not have an agenda. I have hopes and dreams. There's a lot of things I believe strongly in. I will be a strong advocate for those things, but I am one of five. And I do understand that after the process is, is made, even though I might not like it, um, I will support, um, you know, support the decisions made by, by the majority of this, this council. Again, uh, fellow council members, again, if I'm asking questions or challenging, uh, it's just, again, for me to help, um, my understanding uh, to, uh, help make, help me make the best decision, uh, possible. So, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm excited. Um, I'm excited, and, and, um, thanks. Uh, it's gonna be a, a great, a great time ahead here in St. Helens. Many challenges, but I think we will be moving forward. Thank you.
Patrick, thank you. Okay, and, uh, yeah, just listening to you talk, um, you know, I know in our retreat, we, we, we will be talking about kind of our mantra and, uh, and I might even divvy that up, but, um, and just, uh, expectations and conduct of, of council. So, um, you, you're kind of spot on with what we're, we will be talking about, so. Um, all right. So with that, any other business before we go? Any staff? Uh, and again, I, I want to thank staff as well. Um, you guys do a fabulous job, uh, every, each and every one of you, even the guy, you know, the guys working in the weed, just running the weed ear for the parks, you guys are doing it, so we appreciate you. All right, with that, we are adjourned.
Good night.